Why do you all do dairy cows? You sit around and feed cows or something like that.
All right, I'll now call to order this meeting of the City of White House Council for today, September the twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-five. It is six P M. Ms. Nichols, would you please call a roll?
Yes, sir. James Wonsley.
Here.
Zach Briscoe.
Here.
Franzell Burns.
Here.
John Chambers.
Here.
Michaela.
Here.
Matt Lazarine.
Here.
Do you have a question?
Excellent. Would you please stand if you're able and join Councilman Lowe as he leads us in a word of prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you again for another day. We thank you for all the staff in this town and our council and our mayor, first responders, and also, more importantly, our citizens. Help us to make decisions tonight that will be the best decisions, not just decisions, and forgive us of our sins in Jesus's name on this.
Amen. Please join the Council on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Sounded fantastic. All right, that takes us down to item D, Presentations. We have one from Ms. Lusk.
Mayor, Council, I'm excited to introduce our new accounts payable and payroll coordinator, Carissa Reeves. She is a proud graduate of White House High School and has been a part of our community for more than forty years. With over thirty years of experience in accounts payable and payroll, she brings a wealth of knowledge and expertise to our office. Outside of work, she is the proud mother of two daughters, Taylor and Emily, and a honey, two four-month-old Quentin. Who are actually here tonight. Today also happens to be her birthday.
What?
Which makes this introduction even more special. We are so excited to have her on our team, and she's already proven to be a wonderful addition to our department, so please join me in welcoming her, Carissa.
Happy birthday!
Thank you, Carissa. Ms. Lusk has high standards, so I suspect that you're a borderline genius. Is that right? Welcome to, welcome back to White House. Welcome to White House. All right, our second is a presentation, Jake Hootier, by Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, I'm excited to introduce Jake Hootier, our new Director of Development Services, who started with us on September tenth. Prior to joining the City of White House, he held multiple roles with the City of Tyler in both the Transit and Water Departments. Jake earned his bachelor's degree in Business Administration with a concentration in marketing from Ottawa University in two thousand and seventeen, followed by a master's degree in Business Administration with a concentration in Strategic Innovation in two thousand and twenty, also from Ottawa University. He recently married his wife Dana in February of two thousand and twenty-five, so we're excited to have Jake as a part of our team.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Jake, same.
I didn't want to make him stand up in front of himself, so.
Welcome to the team. All right, that takes us down to item E, Community Interest. We have some items of community interest here. Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, the renovations at one oh nine East Main City Center continue. Furniture delivery did start this week, so we are getting ever closer to the opening of City Center. I expect that we will be putting out a date very, very soon for our grand opening celebration on that building. If you somehow missed it, the Welcome to White House sign at one ten and three forty-six is backed up and looks amazing. A big thank you to Erin Martinez for coordinating all of that. It looks really great. We're glad to have that back downtown. National Night Out is in two weeks, on Tuesday, October seventh, here at City Park, from five P M. to seven P M. And our police department, our departments worked really hard to put together a great evening, so we encourage everyone to come out for that. And just as a reminder, Election Day will be November fourth. There will be, both the city and the school district will have propositions on the ballot, so for more information, check out either the school district's website or ours about that, to get additional information about what exactly those propositions mean.
We have eight propositions from White House. You'll see seventeen from the state, and whatever the school, the school has, there's going to be some voter exhaustion towards the
Lot of research.
end of that ticket. Yeah, there's a lot of things to research there, so. I feel like, I mean, it stole a little bit of my thunder, but wow, what are the chances that Chris would have a birthday today? It's also Councilman Lowe's birthday. He turns seventy today.
Seventy.
Seventy?
But I feel like forty!
It's not every day that the birthday lines up on the council meeting, so we gotta do something. He's got his little cupcake and a shirt? Oh, we all got shirts. You got a cupcake? Happy birthday, Council.
Thank you.
Anything else from Council on a matter of community interest?
Yes.
What you got?
Just to thank you, to recognize our staff, the streets and drainage and the parks and recreation. A lot of these guys go unrecognized, but they're so important. And I was sitting on my front porch in my rocking chair and gazing down Memory Lane the other day, and I saw streets and drainage working very hard, and a lot of their work is after hours. But it's just, it never goes unrecognized and is so appreciative, you know, the hard work you do. And a lot of the work you do isn't real pretty and beautiful and all that, but thank you, and we appreciate you. One more thing, Mayor. A lady by the name of Ms. Haber did some library work the other day on the landscape, and she did it for nothing. And I mean, that is so appreciative, and I told her the other day, I said, I wish we had a hundred and fifty just like you, you know? So just a lot of thank yous for our fellow citizens.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council. Anything else from Council? All right, that moves us to item F, Consent Agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda for your consideration. It's approval of the minutes of the city council meeting on August nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. If no one on Council would like that moved on to the regular agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve it as presented.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the consent agenda passes. Onto item G, Other Action Items, Ordinances, Resolutions, and Public Hearings. Number one is Discussion, Consideration, and Action on Resident Concerns, one oh seven Dew's Drive, and the entirety of Dew's Drive related to stormwater, wastewater, and streets. This is Black.
Mayor and Council, we have been talking about this area for quite some time. Most recently, at the May two thousand and twenty-five city council meeting, property owners along Dew's Drive expressed an interest in the possibility of adding curb and gutter along that street, as well as widening the street, and asked us to look into issues related to drainage along that roadway. After that meeting, staff got with half to execute a task order to have them do some, an analysis on Dew's Drive and possible improvements. Since Blake Witten's model with half are here to present some information related to Dew's Drive and what they have found.
State your name for the record and show us what you got.
Blake Witten. Thank you for having us. So we have a presentation ready for the Dew's Drive improvements. Our first slide that we have is the existing conditions. So there is two detention ponds at the apartments at the Hagan, at the reserve apartments, one on the west side being the larger one, and one on the east side being the smaller one. It appears that all the runoff from those apartments are captured in those two detention ponds and don't contribute additionally to Dew's Drive. The one on the west side, the runoff from that goes further to the west and not towards Dew's Drive. The one on the east side goes into the ditch along one ten, then to the culvert at Dew's Drive there. In our analysis, we did see the culvert along one ten at Dew's Drive appears to be undersized from the two-year storm event. Textile requirements are for a ten-year storm event for that kind of culvert. We did see that there is still just a local depression or low point at one oh seven Dew's Drive, which makes that area especially prone to flooding. Our next slide, we have option one, which would be widen the street to a thirty-two-foot wide section with curb and gutter, or a different width if preferred. This would require additional right-of-way and realignment of the road through that eastern section near the storage units. This also requiring a closed storm sewer system, which we would ideally want to outfall to the west into the creek, which would require anywhere from two to four easements for that system to outfall into, depending on the alignment chosen for that. We could also look at raising the road profile for this as well, to prevent water from overtopping over the road. And this would also capture water from the city's right-of-way into that storm system. Our option two would be ditch improvements along Dew's Drive. The current ditches do not meet the two-year storm event, so in this alternative, we would bring the ditches up to the twenty-five-year storm event. It would also require relining the road slightly on that eastern side near the storage units, and then possibly some additional right-of-way, just depending on how those sections turn out. And we'd also want to raise the road profile some, just because it is very flat in this area, and we want to raise it some to get the appropriate fall for the ditch going to the east back to one ten. This isn't ideal, just because of the limited space in the area.
Can you dig into that? What do you mean by not ideal? With a limited space?
Sorry, with, on the eastern section, there's a storage units there, and then there's the other business there. So that's trying to fit in that ditch with the road width to be appropriate size without going right up to the building. That would be a challenge. And then just, it'll fit a twenty-five-year storm in that ditch, and you have paint houses on both sides there, so it's not approaching too much into the properties.
So what we're seeing here on the map, there's a green, there's a green line that runs along the road. The road is pink. Is that a right-of-way, or is that?
That is from the county property lines, yes. It's not surveyed right-of-way.
Okay.
It's just from the county's map, so I estimated property lines based on their standard
I see.
Their standard allocation for road widths.
So probably not.
Probably take into account more narrow roadway widths. They estimate the same width for all similar types of roadway.
So those, those are likely not the right lines?
Right, they're not one hundred percent accurate. It gives an idea, but to have it one hundred percent accurate, we need to have that surveyed.
So it's possible there would be an easement, if we were to expand to where that green shows, there would be easement necessary along those lines?
For the additional ditches, yes.
Am I reading it right? You need about an average of four more feet of width down that right-of-way?
Typically.
It shows existing like six foot and then twenty-five year, eleven foot.
So if you're at the far east side, it'd be six additional feet there, and that's assuming that the road wouldn't be widened in the, in that area. And then if we wanted to have additional width on the backside of the ditch before you get to those storage unit buildings, so you don't have the ditch coming back up at a three to one or thirty-three percent slope back to the edge of the building.
Right.
So option three that we have, it's investigating more on this open-back inlet that is at Hagan Road along one ten. We have a picture of it there. It does appear that it used to serve as an inlet with an open back for a ditch that was previously in that area. We believe it would have been a smaller ditch, that it more than likely used to capture some of that runoff and go across one ten with it. Some of the things with this is that the detention pond that is on the east side, the outfall for that does not line up with this open-back inlet, and it requires some regrading of the area to make that accommodated.
But that wouldn't help much at one oh seven with his back.
Correct. It wouldn't help much with any of the runoff along Dew's Drive. It would help on the ditch along one ten, any kind of backup that is at that culvert at Dew's Drive. And we'd also also investigate what the capacity of that pipe is and what the condition of it is, and if there's a reason that it's currently not being localized. And then our last option would be to purchase the property at one oh seven Dew's Drive to eliminate the property that's in the low point, that's flood-prone area, and then investigate the potential of a detention pond or underground detention at this property, or simply no proposed design. Are there any questions from Council?
Blake, can I ask a question? On options one and two, can you speak to how those would or would not impact the issues that are being experienced at one oh seven Dew's Drive?
So option one, that would capture the runoff from the north side and from the road and from the city's right-of-way. So the runoff that would be going to one oh seven would be from just south of the road and from east or west on the south side of the road. One oh seven is still in a low spot, so you would still have some flooding localized there, but the city's right-of-way would be captured.
So if you had to estimate the percentage that comes from the south versus comes from Dew's Drive itself to one oh seven, is there like a fifty, fifty, sixty, or is there a way to even?
I'll have to look at it a little more to see kind of the exact percentage, but the one oh seven property does have runoff coming from the east to west. A little bit from the south, and then currently, when the water overtops the roadway, it would be coming from the north as well.
Yeah, the, the property is on either side, come down to it.
So in reality, options one through four won't impact one oh seven Dew's Drive?
It will help some. One oh seven will still see some.
When you say, when you say help some, kind of tell me.
It would reduce some of the water that would overtop the road from the north, so you wouldn't have that water coming to it. Still, it would capture the water coming from the city's right-of-way, but any localized rainfall on that property or the properties adjacent to it would still come to one oh seven.
Ms. Black, are we to the point where we know the cost of each one of these options?
We do not.
We do not, no. That would be our next step, so we'd investigate the cost of any options that Council would like to proceed going forward, looking into further.
And my understanding is, because I'm not an engineer, but any costs related to any of these options, that would be generally passed on to the people on those streets, a portion of it?
So you can do it, you can do it that way, that it's called a special assessment, where if you're making things that are going to improve the value to the property owner, you would charge a special assessment that they would pay along with their property tax bills, and they would pay a pro-rata portion of the project cost. So typically, we've done that here with curb and gutter improvements in several different areas.
And that's spread out over ten years, twenty years?
I don't remember what the legal limits are on that. It's been a while since I've done one, but we can certainly look at that.
Is that something that the people on that street would have to, it'd be like an agreement between us and them first?
That's how it was done on East Accretap, like where I live, when they put that in. It was a percentage of the cost was added to the property tax rolls.
So it's not uncommon, really?
No, it's pretty standard.
Pretty standard. Ms. Black, the, I'm sorry. The problem that's on Dew's Drive, particularly one oh seven, is it localized?
What I have seen so far, there is water that overtops that road on occasion, that comes down from the north and does cross over the roadway. My concern, I think to Blake's point, is that, you know, this fixes one part of the problem, but it is not going to solve water coming in at one oh seven Dew's Drive.
So I guess my question is, depending on the cost of each one of these options, would be purchasing the property outright be the cheapest way for everyone and also solve the problem?
And is it for sale?
Yeah. Can we force him to sell?
So the, that first option puts us at a standard where some of the newer roads that are built by developers are. So if that alleviates a problem and adds value to the neighborhood, that's, that's good. Anything that widens the road is good, really. It's kind of a narrow road. So those are the, the ones that I'm kind of leaning towards are the ones that provides really long-term value for that neighborhood and helps alleviate some of the problems.
There is a trade-off, though, for those property owners, because they are going, it will take additional right-of-way in order to get that roadway widened. So I just want to.
Yeah, that's the easement will have to be a part of it. So it's almost two things negotiated. It's the, for this particular solution, it's the easement of the property and whatever costs are incurred by bringing in curb and gutter, using the pretty typical model that we use for doing that.
But will one oh seven still flood?
That's the key.
Any localized rainfall on their property, but he would not have any runoff from the city's right-of-way going to them.
So the next step would be to see.
There's no way to follow.
See what everything costs and then just weigh our options from there.
Are there particular? I was gonna ask him, is there a way we can wind it or narrow down some of these options?
I mean, more than likely, option one's gonna be the cost list of the four options, I would assume.
It would be the cost for option.
Which one would you recommend?
We'd recommend.
Oh, I don't think I have this. No.
Combination of option one and option three, because any of these can really be done together. But option one and option three would provide the best benefit.
Ms. Black, can you show three again?
But it doesn't fix the problem.
It, it limits the runoff from the city's right-of-way going to the property, is what it would.
Which part of option three?
Seeing what the capacity of that culvert is and if that can take on some of the runoff so that you don't have as much going to that one-ten and Dew's Drive intersection.
So it doesn't back up?
Right, correct. So it doesn't back up as much, because currently, we believe that water gets to that culvert and then backs up some down Dew's Drive, not all the way down it, but that can reduce the amount of flow going down.
But the property in question is low.
Correct.
There's nothing we can do on each side, like a ditch or anything. You can't intrude on private property.
Right, no, beyond private property.
Can't do it, yeah.
I think one of the hardest steps would be getting the, the people in the neighborhood with the option one to agree to the costs that are associated with their portion, and the city obviously will incur a lot of those.
Most of it, yeah. So the ditch that's there, it, it's effective until it's not, when it's overgrown. It's just a big maintenance. It's like a recurring maintenance project, the way that, the way that thing is now.
Forget my ignorance on this, but let's say the individual at one oh seven decided to do some improvement on their person, on their property.
Right.
And they wanted to tie in to the improved drainage system. Are any of these limiting so that he would not have the ability to do that?
I guess I'm not fully understanding.
So in other words, if it's above-ground drainage, he could run a swale ditch or something locally to take some of his runoff into that ditch, but if we go underground, I don't know whether or not there's provisions to allow him to tap like a French drain or something like that into that.
The road would be higher, though.
The biggest challenge would be the elevation, getting it from the backyard to.
You'd be going from a low point to a high point.
Because the road will come up even higher than what it is.
Getting the grade that you need to get down to drain.
But with the road being higher, because it's curbed, the water runoff would be flowing down the curb, right?
Back to one-ten.
Back to one-ten to the drainage system.
That underground drainage would be higher than whatever.
Yeah, you'd need a ditch that starts off and is eventually eight or ten feet deep by the time it gets to the road.
I don't know that we can achieve the grade necessary to get it downhill.
When we have curb and gutter, we have like underground culverts, how, how deep do those generally go?
It depends. In this situation, it probably wouldn't be very deep, I wouldn't imagine, just because of where it'd be going to, but there can be circumstances, depending on where it's flowing to, how deep that is, that it can be.
And again, because it's some private property, we can't put some type of city-sized French drain in the middle of his property to pull that water off, because that's on his personal property.
I like that question. I do. It's a very valid question. See, do you have an answer?
I would have to look into that more and see if that's something.
You can.
Yeah, she said.
And it would have to go, it would have to go east. It couldn't even go north, really.
What if you don't pay the extra assessment on your taxes?
It ultimately becomes a lien.
Okay, that's what I figured, yeah.
So I guess the question is, do we have options that we would like to see further information on price-wise?
I'd like to see their recommendation. You know, I'd like to see a price on that, and then was option four behind the house?
Right.
I'd like to explore that, too.
I would, too.
Staff will work on that side of it.
Can, can, gotta put it out here, can we force him out of the house?
No, absolutely not.
And why would you?
I don't know.
This is private property.
I'm just asking. I don't know. Imminent domain.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
They would have to go through a
Process.
Okay.
A legal condemnation process that this meets none of the eligibility for, that we wouldn't, we are not in the business of getting, taking people out of their homes.
And I wouldn't walk that, I wouldn't walk that.
All right, so the staff have clear direction? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, that takes us down to item G two. Discussion, Consideration, and Action on ordinance twenty-five dash zero nine two-three dash zero one, adopting the budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six. Ms. Black.
Mayor and Council, I appreciate you all being on our Budget Mayor-thon since Mayor June of two thousand and twenty-five. And included in your packet were updates to the line item budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. I will not bore anybody here with going back through all of these things. I'll hit the highlights. New taxable valuation increase of just over ten percent. We had twenty-two million in new construction value, which is up from the prior year. Our property tax rate calculations, the no-due revenue rate, which is the rate that would be required to adopt to generate the same amount of property tax revenue as the prior year, came in at point six seven two four two five. I do want to note that the voter approval rate came in at point seven seven five eight six five, and our recommended and maximum tax rate that you can adopt tonight is point seven one seven eight five five, well below the voter-approved rate. We feel like this is really important information. One of the things while we are recommending a tax rate above the no-due revenue rate, as you all know, just like in your home, city costs go up, so this has allowed us to make sure that we are remaining competitive with public safety personnel, in particular, the way those salaries have been raising. It is getting harder and harder, not only to find good officers and firefighters, but to keep them, and so this allows us to do that. Sales tax trends, we are estimating a flat sales tax revenue for the upcoming year. It came in just slightly above prior year for the end of twenty-four, twenty-five, so we expect that trend will continue. This budget, as you all know, does include significant contributions for capital projects, which include some projects that are on the agenda for a little bit later tonight, but the, including Shangam Park Municipal Complex Design, some stormwater projects, and other utility infrastructure. As you all know, we've worked really hard on our debt service to maximize the opportunity to keep a level debt rate of our tax rate portion. I, I was looking at some numbers earlier today. Our debt rate has gone from about forty-one cents to about twenty-eight cents in just the last few years, and that's been strategic and planned out really well by Jennifer and Specialized Public Finance, and so we appreciate their hard work on that and making sure that we're at a sustainable level that will ensure that we're able to meet the needs of a growing community while also keeping our tax rate flat. And I will go through all the notable changes for each of the funds. We've covered those kind of ad nauseam. This is just another list of our key projects that are coming up for the fiscal year. Again, some operational improvements that we're seeing. And then just finally, some key takeaways for this budget. It maintains the current tax rate while investing in our growing community, while still supporting a lean, capable workforce. We're serving ten thousand residents with fifty-five employees. That's something we're really proud of, but it doesn't just happen. It takes some really intentional effort by our staff. We are working to launch some long-term infrastructure stewardship through our asset management and review programs, continue some sustainable utility rates. You will notice later in our agenda that we are not recommending a change to our water rates, only our wastewater and garbage rates, and then strengthens our financial resilience by planning appropriately for those capital projects. This last slide is next steps, and after tonight, the only next step is for us to get to October first and the fiscal year to begin. Staff, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from Council? It's kind of old news at this point. We've been looking at it.
at it since May, I think, or something?
I I don't have any questions. I'd just say I I've sat through the the county's budget process and I want to tell you how very pleased and happy I am being a part of this community, the way the staff handled this budget process, the way y'all approached it. Like you said, we run a very lean city here, but we provide a lot. And the things we're gonna do in this budget for the citizens, the the progress while still maintaining the tax rate, to me is amazing. So thank you all for y'all's hard work on that.
And the strategic steps forward on staffing as well. We saw two new staffs today, which so we got, we got people that have been here for, I don't want to say how long, they've been here for a long time, and in that time, they've grown into three or four different roles that they play just in one person. If that person retires, that's a unicorn. You can't, you can't hire that person. You have to split their responsibilities so that we can, so that we can grow as a city and they're they're able to provide the services that our that our growing city needs. So I just want to say thank you for putting the effort into kind of that long-term vision and planning on on staffing and man, the police department, remember we were fighting to get people in the police department? We had four openings and five openings and three openings and you guys have done a great job of building the culture and getting the pay scale where it needs to be to be highly competitive there. Same thing on fire department. I know the chief, chief's uh guys are happier over there maybe than they've they've ever been, I hope, okay.
And we're gonna get a new fire station.
Very happy.
Yeah, yeah. But it's great, just all the momentum that seems, I don't, I don't know how you keep it going year after year with, you know, just throwing yourself into it and and getting better and better. So thank you for, thank you for all your efforts in that.
Well, Mayor and Council, thank you for all your support. That uh I've seen some other cities' budget processes who don't go as quickly and uh it it's easy when we have a council that supports staff's efforts and staff supports council's efforts and the community and and all of this work together. So we're, we're very thankful to be doing the budget process here in my house.
The amount of employees we have here is amazing for the population. I'm, and I'm just thrilled, you know. It's a big deal.
It will continue to be a challenge as we grow to make sure that we're adding people in the right places, um, and that we're strategic about doing it. We certainly don't want to be too heavy in some areas and and not have enough staffing in others, so we'll continue those discussions, but uh yeah, we're really proud of what we're able to accomplish.
And when the phone rings, you want somebody there to answer this, what the citizens want, you know, so.
It's true.
You gotta, we're, I think we're doing well there. Any, any more comments from council on the budget? All right. This is an, this is an action item. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance twenty five dash zero nine two three dash oh one, adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, Zach Briscoe?
Yes.
Franz L. Burns?
Yes.
John Chambers?
Yes.
Michael Lowe?
Yes.
Matt Lazarin?
Yes.
All right, with that, the motion carries, we have a budget. All right, now we gotta pay for it. Number three is a public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty five, twenty six property tax rate of zero point seven one seven eight five five for a hundred dollars valuation. The time is now six thirty three, and I will take us into the public hearing. You are now in the public hearing.
Anyone like to come speak?
Anyone, Aaron's gonna go get a drink. Anyone that would like to speak, you don't have to have signed up to speak, so long as you're speaking on the subject of the proposed property tax rate. One more.
I've never seen Jim to be shot at speed.
All right, seeing none, the time is six thirty three, and we'll bring the public meeting to a close. And now back to the regular agenda. Any further discussion from council? Now I'll entertain a motion.
No action on public hearing, mayor. I'll move into.
Oh, we're gonna do, okay, so number four. All right, so technically, G four, discussion, consideration, and action on ordinance two five dash zero nine two three dash zero two, adopting the tax rate for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, I'll rehash our tax rates all over again. I will say that staff is recommending a proposed tax rate for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year, of which point four two eight zero zero three we use for maintenance and operations and point two eight nine eight five two for interest and sinking funds for a total tax rate of point seven one seven eight five five. And there is very specific language that needs to be used for the motion when you get ready for that.
All right, who's ready to play the game and name that motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the property tax rate of zero point seven one seven eight five five be adopted, of which zero four two eight zero zero three for maintenance and operations and zero two eight nine eight five two for interest and sinking funds.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, can I get a roll call vote, please, Ms. Nuss?
Yes, sir. Zach Briscoe?
Yes.
Franz L. Burns?
Yes.
John Chambers?
Yes.
Michael Lowe?
Yes.
Matt Lazarin?
Yes.
All right, with that, the motion passes. We have a budget and we have a mechanism to pay for it. All right, number five is discussion, consideration, and action of ordinance twenty five dash zero nine two three dash zero three fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five budget amendments, of which there are many. All right, Ms. Lusk.
Um, Mayor and Council, um, in your packet, we have several budget amendments that are to adjust revenues and expenditures to show the actual cost incurred during the year or new items that were not uh included in the approved budget um for for the fiscal year. So we have general fund revenue, uh insurance claims, uh increase were to cover the outdoor warning sound that was damaged by a lightning strike. Transfer in uh was from the American Rescue Plan funds deposited into the general fund after the ARPA account was closed. Uh, general fund expenditures, we had special projects that were uh the Welcome to White House sign, strategic plan, charter review. Buildings and grounds uh covers uh the irrigation repairs at the Welcome to White House sign and Howling One Ten at Loop Forty Nine sign. Uh contractual services uh reflect the IT contract adjustments, CPI, purchase of uh PD laptops, and then also implementation of C clip fix. Uh clerical, employing, retirement, uh insurance and taxes were adjusted after it was decided to reclassify city center position uh for the AP payroll coordinator, who will also back up city center as needed.
So Mayor and Council, for that one, we originally had that in the city center department budget. We moved that over to finance, so while she'll be housed at city center, she really serves more finance function, so we felt like it was more appropriate for that to be in the finance department. Sorry.
Online credit card fees, uh temporary rate spike over a few months, and new contract has been signed to reduce these rates. Uh, we do have note for uh early spring to verify with them the rates. We don't expe- you know, expect a rate increase uh for that yet, if so, then we'll renegotiate a contract with them.
So that was, that was only running for a few months and it it is, it is pretty hard.
The rates increased quite a bit.
Wow.
Magnets for parks and trails, uh for tree pruning, uh electricity ca- uh costs for the Black Hawk Creek Pavilion. We have more general fund expenditures, uh other equipment was for the fitness court that will be at Sheehan Park. Uh, the um, and for other improvements cover Sheehan Park, um ballpark parking project uh that was funded by the ARPA funds that were transferred into general fund. So we are keeping up with that as we're spending it, but it is having to hit an expenditure.
Just offsetting the revenue that we brought in on the general fund revenue amendment with this expenditure, so that we're running it through the general fund, but we are keeping track of the amount of those funds to ensure that we're spending them on park improvements.
And we're getting a grant for the, for that uh equipment out there, the?
We're seeking, yes, we are working with a a local um organization for some cost rumors.
Yeah, the fitness, what was it called again, the fitness?
That was the grant that Aaron worked on.
Yeah, fitness court, yes, okay. Gotcha.
Clerical operations and maintenance, uh employee retirement, insurance, and payroll taxes adjusted to reflect city center, city center staffing changes, uh clerical um position uh was was done in the finance and we will see it in the utility fund. The custodian position is now funded through Parks and Maintenance and the utility fund, so it will serve uh general fund and utility fund.
And I'll, I'll note, all of these, you're just seeing the numbers right here, everything she's reading is part of the packet, so if you wanna go check it out, it's, you don't have to write, nobody has to write anything down, it's all part of the packet.
It's all of them.
Yeah.
Um, in the community development uh department, it was a new account created for the neighborhood services officer position. Uh, and so all of those in that department were for that position. And as well as the insurance and taxes, uh office supplies for the neighborhood services officer. Uh, overtime in the general fund uh for the police department was for vacancies, uh four hours of overtime per pay period. Um, sixteen hours of required training per officer, uh SRO time uh may be in there as the school requests for them to be there at certain times, but we are reimbursed by the school for that time, so they know uh we have it on the timesheet where it is listed out per uh for the overtime and regular time. And then cover any sick or vacation leave when we're having to bring officers in. Uh, fire, uh to cover vacation if we had structure fires and fire prevention program. Uh, the outdoor warning system is the same with lightning or strike, um, which was covered by our liability insurance.
Ms. Black, I know talking with you the other day, one of the things I think staff tries to do, especially police and fires, keep the comp time down a- and all that, would that be part of some of this cost here?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
Not, not usually. Um, this is gonna be largely on the police department side, probably due to vacancies uh that they had or officers in training, just backfilling. Uh, and then fire department is extra coverage, emergency situations, structure fires, that type of thing.
Good.
So the utility fund.
I also, those, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Those two departments also have recurring overtime on every pay period, and I don't know that in the past we have budgeted enough for, for the amount of overtime that just comes with the shift work that they they normally do. So some of that adjustment is just on the bookkeeping side for me, that we weren't quite budgeting enough to account for the standard overtime that they're gonna get for every pay period.
Good.
The utility fund expenditures, uh clerical and operations maintenance, this is where you'll see the AP coordinator and the custodian salaries being paid from uh buildings and grounds, the emergency replacement of the pu- public work shop roof. Contractual services uh includes the utility fund portion of the IT contract, implementation of C clip fix, and then you'll see a decrease in the City of Tyler water contract due to the the low usage that we had used during the the year. Online and credit card fees, same thing, the the uh rate increase. Chemical and mechanical supply, higher costs for additional chemicals used in the water and sewer system. And then we have a water system account, which is additional electrical repairs and repair of the Neptune collector at the Hagan Tower that we did get reimbursed by our liability insurance. It was a hit by lightning, a direct hit on that day. Water system improvements for the one ten generator project that was carried over from last fiscal year and then engineering for the Austin bank taking. Lift stations and sanitary sewers increased for just unforeseen maintenance and repairs of the wastewater treatment plant and lift stations. We have the court security and technology fund. Um, so in May of twenty five, accordance to legislation, uh these are combined funds, so you will see one fund for both of them. They were two separate funds, so this is combining them as of anything from May going forward is going to be in the combined fund. ARPA reflects revenues um that we transferred over into the general fund uh to meet reporting requirements obligated these funds by December thirty first of twenty four. Twenty two certificates of obligation covers costs incurred for the city center project. We have the twenty five certificates of obligation, so this was the uh funds received from uh from the twenty five. Uh, economic development, uh amended um the contractual services for the retail recruitment services contract. Then we have vehicle maintenance, um sale of assets adjusted to reflect the revenue from the sale of the vehicles. Also, the city has uh begun a reserve worth of vehicle maintenance fund. Leases and rentals include the vehicle for Parks and Facilities Director, and then you can uh, we have a hidden expense account for any of the vehicles that we did do down payment from the sale of assets. So Enterprise have given us an amount uh that we have budgeted, and then we, we applied that towards those vehicles and then what the difference in those gains, we were able to to leave in that fund, which helped uh get started our reserve for that. And then the vehicle maintenance was prim- primarily due to uh police vehicle repairs that were covered by insurance and just maintenance costs during the the fiscal year. Staff is happy to answer any questions. You may.
Any?
Pretty informative.
Pretty, pretty thorough explanation, very thorough.
I'm glad I wasn't in accounting.
Yeah, thanks for the, for the time and the transparency, all of those.
Just didn't do it.
Mayor and Council, Jennifer, I would be remiss if we wrapped up a budget process and budget amendments without bragging on the job that Jennifer does each and every day.
We really appreciate it.
Up until Carissa came on board, Jennifer was single-handedly processing, you know, upwards of twenty million dollars a year, um, and keeping track of of every which way that's moving. And I, I think, once we get past tonight, maybe she won't, well, she'll still be working in three different fiscal years, so we'll immediately move into audit for twenty four, twenty five. She'll be inputting the budget for twenty five, twenty six, and I guarantee you, she already has a list going for twenty six, twenty seven. So we appreciate everything that she does. I know I can speak on behalf of the entire staff. Um, it makes her really uncomfortable when I do it, but um she really is the glue that keeps this, this organization together, so we appreciate it.
And she advances her education. That's what is amazing. Certifications and.
So, Ms. Black, would you say, you've been doing this longer than I have, would you say these budget amendments are in line with standard?
Yes, sir. Uh, and that we run them, our auditor sees them every year, uh it's recommended, and uh it just encapsulates, you know, we can't anticipate today, um, what's gonna happen in January or February. We do our best of twenty twenty six, and so this cleans up all of the actions that you've taken in the past year, all the communication that we've had about how that financial position changes throughout the year. And so this just solidifies it, gives you an opportunity to take one vote on it and make sure that it's captured.
Yeah, it's a final review process. It's, it's important. Things are gonna change. The budget is the map, it didn't match the terrain. You get down the terrain, it's different. Did a really good job of uh, and and better than anywhere else I've seen of like spelling out exactly what the change was, so. Thank you. Anything else from council on this item? All right, we got an action on this one, so if there's no further questions or comments from council, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance twenty five dash oh nine two three dash oh three dash fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget amendments.
I'll second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be the last roll call vote. I'll do a roll call vote on this too, please.
All right, yes, sir. Zach Briscoe?
Yes.
Franz L. Burns?
Yes.
John Chambers?
Yes.
Michael Lowe?
Yes.
Matt Lazarin?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
All right, that's motion passed. That takes us down to item G six. Discussion, consideration, and action on an update to the personnel policy, Mrs. Lusk.
Mayor and Council, in your packet, you'll find proposed changes to the personnel policy.
A couple.
All one hundred and fifteen questions.
Percent of changes reflects federal law requirements that are adding or updating. These include the I nine immigration reform, family medical leave act, pregnancy leave, and HIPAA requirements. We've also updated our leave policies, specifically holidays, vacation, quarantine leave. Other revisions address work standards, communicable disease protocols, health-related benefits, definitions, as well as covered applications of prohibited technology. Staff is happy to answer any questions.
Several changes in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This four hundred and eighteen page packet, that was a hundred and something.
Hundred fifteen.
Yeah.
My printer found out the hard way.
Should we go by this page by page on my.
Yeah, my mom would be proud I made it through all that reading. That was very thorough. I mean, that was just reading it, the, the amount of time you guys put into considering Yeah, my mom would be proud I made it through all that reading, that was very thorough, I mean, that was just reading it, the, the amount of time you guys put into considering it and changing it and coming up with something that meets the letter of the law is, is pretty, pretty impressive. Um, yeah, any further discussion from council? No, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the updates to the personnel policy as presented.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, we've got a new personnel policy. All right, G seven, discussion, consideration and action on the Austin Bank Elevated Storage Tank Rehabilitation Final Design. Mister Henderson, a rare appearance at the mic, sir.
Mayor and Council, we, uh, are here to talk about this for the final design cost, as far as the project that's already been approved. And I actually have Jason's side of the panel, if y'all do have additional questions. It's basically the cost of the final design would be seventy-two thousand nine hundred dollars. And that will bring the complete project cost to six hundred fifty thousand nine hundred dollars. Which, as previous discussion, it is a requirement from TCEQ to do this every so often, so that's why I'm here tonight to bring this to y'all, to get approval to go into the final design phase.
Do we have pictures from this one that we can show?
I can put them in the PowerPoint, Mayor, they are in the packet.
They're in the packet, and you'll see, there's, there's definitely a need for this, from what I, from what I saw, you saw something interesting there.
We have to do it.
Oh, I just, uh, I called Ms. Black today, cause I was like, hey, um, it says the legs are in fair condition, like I wanna make sure that was, so, so when it says fair, if, if, me being a laborer, cause I'm not an engineer, anything like that, it's, we good, or we didn't even need to work on that?
I think what they're mainly talking about, like, in the inspections, mainly the paint on it, because, you know, you have the paint chips, and as old as that tank is, you have to look at what's in the painting and all that, so that's why they're recommending the, uh, sandblasting the whole thing.
Not structurally the legs of that thing.
We're still good there.
Well, we have a graphic on the tank paint.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What might that be?
Like a wildcat, or?
We will be hap- we're not to those discussions yet, we're happy to have those with our partners at White House ISB.
Yes, that's what I wanted.
I think one or two of them will be open to the discussion, so.
Yeah, maybe decorated with giant rhinestones, just to really make it blink. Yeah, that's, that'd be great, um, to keep those conversations open. A- any more questions for Mister Henderson?
I'll just add that the, as, as you all noted, the full report of the, the condition of the tank is included in the packet, if anybody.
That was seventy-five. I forgot how many pages that was.
But it's very thorough, like, uh, the, the pictures, the explanations.
The inside, yeah.
I think they were there like all day.
That's amazing.
What do they do with the water when they drain it, like?
It'll drain into the creek that runs behind Austin.
Cause I saw the picture, I, I tested, I was like, so we are still using this thing, it was empty, so.
Just straight up for the day, and then we fill it back.
Right.
It's not still empty.
Do you know a timetable when this will happen?
Uh, we do know, we're still in the basement, you know, once we get the final design in, then they'll start, we'll start the bidding process to get the process rolling. And then once we get the contractor, then they can start kinda giving us a better time.
And, and reading that, these improvements should last upwards of twenty years or approximately twenty years?
Yes, that's why it's a, it's the more expensive the ones that we got approved, because naturally we want it to last longer than that. Just do it for a five or ten year, then you just have to do the same thing over.
And if we were to fail to do this, number one, we wouldn't be, we'd be in violation of TCEQ, and the quality of our water would be good, now I don't know about you, I like the quality of my water, so.
Well, let's go ahead as an RFP and RFQ.
RFQ.
Okay, cool. It's good, those you know the price of, the RFQs you don't, so it'll be good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mister Henderson. All right, any questions or comments from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion on this one.
Council and Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the Austin Bank EST rehabilitation final design.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, with that, the motion carries. All right, item number G nine, discussion, consideration and action on updates to the Lexington Street Drainage Project, let's call up Mister Henderson. I did skip number eight, I'm sorry, discussion, consideration and action on a belt press rehabilitation project at the wastewater treatment plant.
Still T.
Still Mister Henderson.
Mayor and Council, I'm here to talk to y'all about the, uh, belt press of the wastewater treatment plant. Due to its age, it's over three decades old, dealing with the worst of the worst of the industry, as y'all know. And as it's getting older, it's becoming more of a maintenance problem, it's becoming more expensive. So, we're, uh, recommending a rehabilitation, which will, uh, total cost of that will be two thousand thirty, two hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars.
I was gonna say, that's a bargain.
Why even bother?
Wow.
I have, uh, yeah, I have, uh, two different quotes that are in, it's a total cost for a new sludge pump and for the rehabilitation of the actual belt.
Can you repeat the cost again?
Two hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars.
Thank you.
So, when you use the term rehabilitation, is that refurbishing the parts there, or is it new parts?
The only thing that will be original would just be the frame that's actually holding, like, we'll get new, uh, drive motors, wheels, the plastic railing that holds the belt in place to help the demollering process, so basically, basically be a, almost a whole new.
Okay, okay, cause when I see refurbishment, I just wanna make sure, so it's basically a new system?
Basically, yes.
How long did the old one last?
Uh, that one was cut in in ninety-five.
Wow.
Thirty years, yeah? Excellent, any more questions for Mister Henderson?
Mayor and Council, just a note, we are considering this an emergency project, because if this fails, uh, wastewater treatment plant fails.
Yes, stop, 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 moving.
And is a sole source provider, so, uh, those are two reasons why this will not go through the bidding process that some of our other projects do. This has a very serious time constraint, and then we have a sole source provider as well.
It's very important.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the belt press rehabilitation project as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, with that, that motion carries too. The next one is G nine, discussion, consideration and action on updates to the Lexington Street Drainage Project, again, Mister Henderson.
Mayor and Council, I'm here to talk about the Lexington Drainage Project, which was, as I said, like the last one was previously approved. And now we have the, uh, final design cost, which will be a total of fifty-nine thousand three hundred dollars, which would bring the grand total for this project to two hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred dollars. Which will be taken out of the two thousand eighteen certificates of obligation.
Let's pretty much close out those COs.
This will not, the Rosebrook Drainage Project will be the one that will finish that out, plus some, probably. Those were originally designated for streets and drainage, so, uh, and our financial advisors advised that we need to get those spent, so.
While they were there.
Any idea how long that will take, like a week, two weeks?
Uh, the actual project, it's, we're kinda in the same boat with the Austin Bank until we get to final design, we don't really know how long it will take.
Total price, two hundred forty-four, three hundred?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or discussion from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, for the approval of the Lexington Street Drainage Project Final Design.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, with that, that motion carries as well, thank you, Mister Henderson. Onto item G ten, discussion, consideration and action on ordinance twenty-five dash zero nine two-three dash zero four through twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six water, wastewater and garbage rates, Mrs. Lusk.
Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this one.
Yes, sir. This is exciting, this is the only time I'd be a tie, I get to vote.
We'll see what we can do for you, Mayor.
Yeah, we'll see if we can fit you right in there.
Mayor and Council, in this ordinance, the water, uh, water rates remain unchanged with no increase to the minimum monthly charge or the tiered usage rates. The wastewater rates include a six percent increase to both the minimum and tiered rates based on the recommendation from the Water and Wastewater Rates Study, uh, Will Dan in January of twenty-four. For garbage services, the rates have been adjusted to reflect a four percent contractual increase in the, per customer charge from the public services. The city also applies an administrative overhead fee to each account, which has been adjusted by the same percentage. Together, these changes result in the residential monthly rate increasing from twenty-four eighty-two to twenty-five eighty-one for resident, for the resident customers. These adjustments are intended to maintain the financial stability, sustainability of each utility service and ensure continued investment in this essential infrastructure. Staff is happy to answer any questions or recommends approval of this ordinance.
Was that ninety cents?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine cents?
Yes, sir.
Now, Ms. Black, was this the thing we, we were talking about, back during the budget workshop of gradually increasing this over the next five years?
So, we did look at water rates, um, in particular, so, um, Will Dan, we brought them into a study in January of twenty twenty-four to look at our water and wastewater rates and, um, in comparison to the capital needs that we knew we were facing at the time. And we did mention needing to look at our water rates, um, we did a comparison of nearby cities and their current water rates. And our current water rates are right in line with what they're doing, and so, staff felt it prudent to keep water rates, um, as low as we can this year. Understanding that we do have a six percent increase on wastewater and a small increase on trash at four percent. So, we just wanted to make sure that if we could, we kept those rates flat, and so that's what we're recommending that we do. We may look at that, we will continue to look at that every year, um, as those chemical costs continue to rise for both water and wastewater. It may be something that, that we have to look at, but again, we review that on an annual basis.
And that's six percent and four percent combined, that's the ninety-nine cents?
So, the ninety-nine cents would just be just for the garbage.
That's just garbage waste.
Do we have an estimated impact of the six percent on the average household? I should have asked that.
It's a good question.
Yeah, my apologies, I should.
So, we are going from two, uh, so the sewer is going from twenty-two twelve worth of base to twenty-three forty-five.
Depending on usage.
Yes.
Yes.
For the mill.
So, the average citizen, depending on their usage, could see between trash and this, a few bucks increase, three to four, depending on their usage.
Particularly, you know, senior citizens, that's kind of what are, are frequent users of minimum mills, so keeping that, um, two to three dollars.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any questions or comments from council on this?
Uh, uh, speaking of water, I think we've got darn good water. And I tell you another thing, I don't hear many complaints myself about our trash service, it's just, I mean, I call them every once in a while and I just, I get service, I, I don't, I don't think we can hardly beat their service, they do good, they do a good job.
I, I hate to see increases at all, but also understand, you know, this is a contractual increase on the garbage side that we're, we're passing along. And I think we did a great job of negotiating that increase, of what it could have been, uh, and the other part is just, is, is keeping up with cost. So, it's, it's just an unfortunate nature of the beast.
Yeah, on the water, wastewater and all that stuff, if you don't charge what it costs, you wind up in the end having to, you know, take that out in the form of a
Somewhere else.
A big bond or something, so it's good to, it's good to charge what it costs as we go along.
But thank y'all for looking at the water rates and, and determining this year was not a year that we need to increase, so I think the citizens will appreciate that.
All right, any other comments from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash zero nine two-three dash zero four adopting the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six water, wastewater and garbage rates as presented.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries.
No time for you.
Maybe next time. Wait just a couple of seconds for Councilman Briscoe to join us. Actually, I probably could have started reading this one, it's long, discussion, consideration and action on a resolution twenty-five dash zero nine two-three zero one, a resolution of the City of White House, Texas. Authorizing the submission of a grant application to East Texas Council of Government, ECOG, for funding under the Regional Solid Waste Grants Program and authorizing the city manager to act as the city's authorized representative, Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, the East Texas Council of Governments administers the Regional Solid Waste Grants Program with funding from the TCEQ. Grant funds are awarded to cities and counties for eligible solid waste planning and management activities. A lot of cities in the area use this for cleanup efforts, however, given the great work that Key White House Beautiful has been doing for us for years with hosting twice annual cleanups. Um, staff was reviewing this program and saw an opportunity to meet a need that we've been hoping to meet for quite some time. And that is the development of a disaster debris management plan. Um, so this is a plan that would go into effect in the event that we have a disaster that contributes a significant, significant amount of debris in the area. This would help us identify possible locations, providers, um, all of the things that we would need in a disaster to appropriately manage the debris. And so, um, staff felt like this was a project that while it was high on our list, um, was limited by bandwidth and funding opportunities. And so, if we can get some help from ECOG to help fund something like this, we would be really happy to do so. So, this resolution just authorizes me to serve as the city's representative and formal notification that you all have approved our grant, uh, grant efforts towards that. Um, so staff is recommending approval.
This last year, we saw a big need for this, if I remember, it was with the May storms last year?
Who?
Was that the year before?
So, we didn't have a significant amount of debris, uh, in the city for that, um, but when you start talking about things, not only um, tree debris, but construction debris, if homes are damaged, um, you know, and it can be a months or years-long process to appropriately dispose of disaster debris in severe cases.
And then to get reimbursement for that.
And then to get reimbursement, so this ensures that we're lining all of that out ahead of time. And if we have a debris, a disaster of that magnitude, it will be something that we're having to pass on to partners that aren't necessarily entirely familiar with our communities, so having all of those things lined out ahead of time would be instrumental in our recovery efforts and reimbursement efforts.
And does this identify partners and locations outside the city, or is this just limited to inside the city?
I don't think it would necessarily be limited to just inside the city.
Cause I think Brandon with Emergency Services for the county is working on something, I think, this also.
Good. It, it never really lines up that way, it's gonna be on the edge of town where it's halfway in our city and halfway out or something like that, so that's good. We only got, what, five square miles here, so. Excellent. All right, any, any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash zero nine two-three dash oh one. A resolution to the City Council of the City of White House, Texas, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the East Texas Council of Governments for funding under the Regional Solid Waste Grants Program. And authorizing the city manager to act as the city's authorized representative.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, with that, the motion carries. All right, um, item, we'll get an update on that whenever it, whenever it comes out.
Uh, the deadline to submit is at the end of this month, there will be a presentation process, and I think we should be notified probably in January of the awards.
Excellent. Thank you for seeking grants, thank you for going outside of the
Yes.
tax base and seeing opportunities like that, we really appreciate it. All right, item number twelve, discussion, consideration and action on the municipal complex concept design, Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, as part of the, well, actually, let me back up, I think this started as part of the Parks and Trails Plan that you all did, uh, at the beginning of twenty twenty-four. Um, if you all remember in there, we saw some preliminary layouts of what could happen here at, at City Hall. Um, as you all know, we are in desperately, one of the top, I think, two of the top three projects identified in the twenty twenty-two capital improvements plan were the reconstruction of a fire station and the removal and reconstruction of a city. were the reconstruction of a fire station and the removal and reconstruction of a city council chambers. Um, the limitations of this current building include the inaccessibility, ADA inaccessibility of this building where we hold our public meetings and our court hearings, um, does not meet current ADA standards, and then fire, our fire department, of course, does not meet current safety standards for carcinogenic prevention. Um, and so we need to look at making significant improvements to both areas. Understanding that construction in both of these areas will significantly impact city park. Um, it gives us the potential opportunity to kind of relook at all of this area from three forty-six all the way back to the front of Jasper Ventures. And if you'll remember, we did have a preliminary concept plan for that in the Parks and Trails Plan. So as a part of furthering that discussion, staff reached out to HAF, um, to see if they would help us do an overall concept plan for this entire area. And they do intend to subcontract with an architect so that we could see renderings of future construction projects, including City Hall. And the fire station is a part of that, we feel like doing that all together makes sense because we are so closely connected with each of those spaces. Um, this is just a furthering of the twenty-eighteen strategic plan by the city council and kind of reimagining the heart of White House, and as a continuation of the work that we have done at city centers. Um, HAF has provided the scope of work and fee, which was included in the packet, um, with a cost not to exceed two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand six hundred, which would be funded from the twenty-twenty-five certificates of obligation. The timeline included in that packet indicates that concept plan would come, concept plan approval would come before you in March of twenty twenty-six.
And that's enough, the two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand?
So this will get us a concept plan and renderings of construction, after that, we would then need to move into construction, uh, drawings and design drawings, and that will be a separate scope and fee to come here.
In the COs, we, we issued the fifteen million. This should cover this project cohesively is, is what we're expecting?
Yes, sir.
I think that would be amazing.
That is certainly our goal and intended budget for those improvements.
I think that'd be huge, have a cohesive area like this where the community can do different things in different spaces, but it's on the same footprint, it's great.
Well, and it, it also helps keep most of our city operations very closely connected and tied together. We had looked at some possible other locations for fire stations, and then I, it's really important to Chief Johnson, it's important to all of us that, um, we maintain that, that connectivity, uh, and proximity to the heart of our community.
Absolutely. Any, any further discuss, uh, discussion or questions on this item? Alright, this is an action item, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve attached scope of work and to authorize the city manager to execute the professional services agreement with HAF in the amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand six hundred, funded from the twenty-twenty-five certificates of obligation proceeds.
Second. Alright, it's motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Alright, with that, the motion carries.
I think that last six hundred is what's gonna put us over the top.
Alright, G thirteen, discussion, action, consideration, uh, discussion, consideration and action on Cheyenne Park Concept Plan and Phase One Updates, Mr. Martinez.
Good evening, mayor and council, I am here to provide an update on the Cheyenne Park project and present the phase one concept plan. The map and O P C C were included in your packet. This first phase focuses on building the foundation for the park, site preparation and utilities, a forty space parking lot with lighting, a loop of concrete walkways, and core amenities including restrooms, two small pavilions, a playground, and fitness ward. It also includes, includes supporting features like picnic tables, drinking fountains and landscaping. Total projected cost for this phase is about one point five six million, which covers construction, contingencies and soft costs. These are planning estimates based on current market conditions and include allowances to cover unforeseen site issues. Phase one establishes the essential infrastructure and amenities to make the park a useful and attractive community space. Staff recommends approval of the concept plan and cost estimate, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So something that stuck out to me is the, the parking lot appears to be asphalt. And my understanding is asphalt and concrete, they're pretty close price-wise. Um, is it possible to consider a concrete option on that? Do we have half people here that know about that?
So the, the parks staff at HAF that we've been working with are not here tonight, um, but, uh, we can certainly check into that, mayor.
And then I have a question on the southwest side, uh, on this pond side. Will there be a fence or something there to prevent, cause I can see the person who lives in that house right there being very angry with people parking right there in front of their house. Will, will that be just free movement into the park from that area? Cause I definitely know a situation where we have citizens coming back going, hey, I got twenty cars parking in front of my house, and I can't ever park in front of my house, cause that way the park is right there.
You're talking about the house on the corner?
Yeah, on the corner down by the pond on the left.
Oh, where the concrete path kinda ends?
Mm-hmm.
Here.
Yeah, it ties into that, uh, sidewalk there, right?
Yeah, I mean, ideally, the people would use.
Use the parking lot, yes. But if someone wants to avoid the playground, they might park in front of, or ten people might park in front of that person's house, and so I, I was just wondering about that. Cause I, if I lived there, I'd be asking that question.
I think rather than a fence, because we don't wanna prohibit pedestrian access from those that live in the neighborhood.
Right.
You know, a simple no parking sign at the end of that may help solve some of that. Cause I'd hate to fence it off to where people couldn't access it if they wanted to.
And, 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 I don't know, is there a way to do that, no parking there unless you're a resident at that address, or how, how is that?
That gets really kind of sticky, um. Yeah, I wouldn't.
Okay.
How we would differentiate between the two.
That, that'd be one concern for me, I mean, I like the design, everything else, that's just one thing that stood out to me. Cause I think on the other side, they have the parking lots people are gonna go to.
I think the, the preparation would be that eventually it would connect, right, so you would be able to drive through there and attach to the other parking lot in the park.
Yeah, the final design shows additional parking on that side, for sure. Um, and that's one of the issues, one of the concerns that the residents of that neighborhood brought up is they didn't want on-street parking as a part of this.
And that's what made me think about it, so.
One of the things this does do though, by keeping the parking closer to the elementary school, it does help alleviate some of the street parking that they experienced during school events. So, cause my initial thought was why don't we just flip the parking, but I think you would still experience on-street parking on Tuvalu if you flipped it.
And forty spaces for the initial phase, that, that'll hold a lot, and obviously forty cars, so.
And with the lim, limited amenities that we can get in phase one, forty spaces is appropriate.
Okay. I was, I was a little shocked at the price, a little sticker, sticker shock for, you know, you see that number and then you see what we have here, but, um, is there any tree clearing that's a part of this, or is that, is, uh, anything that, cause it looks, it looks pretty well landscaped? You know, the areas between the tree, I'm not asking about trees just cause you're Aaron Martinez, I ask you a lot of tree stuff, but this is a.
So there is, there is landscaping in the O P C C.
Okay.
Um, and we haven't talked about individual trees, so my hunch would be, at least my preference would be to us, for us to, you know, select some specimen trees that would stay and do a decent amount of clearing.
Mayor, it looks like in the O P C C that is attached, the only line item that I see particular to landscaping is item number one hundred dot eleven, which is revegetation, it's Bermuda hydromulch, so I'm assuming that that is mainly just to reestablish grass after construction. And that amount is, I just had it and lost it, fifty, about six thousand dollars.
Right, yeah.
Not fifty-six, six thousand dollars.
And with this much green space, I know a lot of people play like that, uh, with the frisbee golf, that kinda stuff, like it, is that being considered as part of it, that can't be that much more for the project, right?
Uh, frisbee golf's relatively inexpensive to, to put in.
Cause I think for this type of landscape, that would be a, a great way to work this space at a very low cost.
Yeah, we can, I mean, we can partner up with the ag department at the school, they have a, a fantastic welding department, they've created disco, or not disco, disc golf, uh, what are they called, baskets? I, I'm not sure what they are.
Kitchen, like chain nets.
There is fif, there is, uh, frisbee golf tournaments that happen.
Right.
I know it's popular, you can touch it.
Oh, yeah.
I enjoy it.
What I love about this is the trees, because it gets hot over here in East Texas.
Just so I understand, but, but as far as the initial phase, all the green space out here in the mill, that's not improved any, or it is, or is that just gonna be like existing?
With some clearing.
What it looks like now, with a trail around it.
Correct, it'll be, I think mostly like it is now. I think the clearing that's allocated is for.
Around the park.
For the building, the park.
Yeah. The phase X renderings that go further out, they had a big open green space, kind of up into the right, I think, of the play area, so.
Mayor, I wanna clarify, I must vote, there is an item two hundred dot fourteen, which is a revegetation allowance for twenty-two thousand six hundred as well, so.
Revegetation? Which number is it again, please?
Two hundred dot fourteen.
Okay.
And I realize we're looking at phase one, but phase two, like what's the timeframe for phase one and what do we think phase two would be?
So that would depend a lot on you guys, where we can find some money, but, um, ideally, we would allocate, you know, some money annually to expand the park.
And Aaron and I have spoken with, um, some of the, the grant writers at HAF about future funding opportunities through Texas Parks and Law, blah, and they, I thi, I think those are an eighty-twenty match, if I remember correctly, and so we are already looking at those timelines to see what we would need to allocate, what we would be eligible for, we've got some meetings planned through the rest of the year so that we can make sure that we're ready for the twenty-twenty-six grant cycle, I believe. Um, so we'll continue to look at that, I don't have a good answer on the rest of the timeline. Um, the full concept plan for this park is, uh, estimated to cost right at seven point two million dollars, and so, um, we do anticipate a long, um, long process for this, and we will make sure that it is one of our priorities to continue to allocate funding, um, as we move forward.
So this phase one size as compared to the other parks in the city, just the phase one size?
How many acres is that right there, that was gonna be my question?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either.
And what was the total, wasn't it like thirty-five acres?
Thirty-seven or something, yeah.
So it looks like it's about a third, maybe a little.
Eight, ten acres?
So one of the goals also was to provide the amenities that we have here at City Park elsewhere, because with the on, oncoming construction here, we didn't know what that would look like for people.
Yeah, allowing another visitor here, yeah.
Right.
Um, you know, having restrooms and having a pavilion and having a playground.
Well, we would include in this playground, I know we, in the initial discussion is like, uh, an all-encompassing playground where children with disabilities would have options, wa, was that included in this?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Didn't we have a young man do a presentation on a specific park they wanted to see sometime there?
We did.
Was that taken into consideration?
So I actually, last week, spent all day, um, in the eighth grade college and career classes giving them the opportunity to design this park using these elements that you see in this opinion of probable construction cost. Um, and it was really interesting, um, their train of thought on how it's not fun to spend money on restrooms and parking, uh, when that is the bulk of your budget and you're trying to build a really great park. Um, but it was interesting, some of them were like, well, could we, they didn't say phase in, but could we do half the parking now because we're not gonna have enough, so that's actually what we're doing, and, um, why does it cost so much, and indeed, why does it cost so much, same questions that we all have. Um, but it was, it was really great, um, I, you know, I think this is something our community can be proud of, and while we have a long way to go, um, I hope we can, we can get there, and so, um, that particular young man was in that class, and, uh, so has a little bit better understanding of, of the funding challenges that come along with a project like this.
Yeah, restrooms, I mean, we, when the kids were young, we would spend an hour packing up, take the kids to the park, we get there. We're there for five minutes, we realize there's not a restroom in this park, we're like, ah, we pack them up.
Gotta run to the air queen.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, especially, you know, young kids, um, young families, it, I think it's, it's a good investment to make sure that they have an enjoyable experience where they're at. There is cost and maintenance and stuff that comes with them, but.
I think it's a great start, for sure, for phase one.
It's a beautiful property.
Yeah, I'm looking down at the line items, uh, in the O P C C, and I, there's not one that necessarily stands out to me that say, that's, that's ridiculous, there's just so many of them. There's so many line items here. But yeah, the question on the, on the asphalt and the concrete, I think that would be great, that, uh, when it gets really hot, there's no cover over that, so during the summer, the, the black asphalt attracts, you know, a lot of sun. Um, I think if it was a concrete area, then that would extend it to make it even open to maybe some more play, who knows?
Or pits.
I like the idea of the disc golf, cause it would be inexpensive to be able to use a lot of that, that green space.
So there's, we have a pretty active tr, trails, you know, parks and, uh, parks and rec, and they're pretty heavy into trails. Would there be an opportunity while we're working on phase two, three, four, to, to allow them to maybe consider extending this with some unimproved trails throughout there?
I think that'd be great.
Okay, so this is just the starting point of what's, of what's, uh, built.
Just need some four-wheelers and some old tires.
That's what they used the first time, they got a tire full of concrete and just drag it around. But it would be good to have it to where it was, um, where it was cut, maybe along the same lines of where the, the actual improved surface might be one day. So I don't know if there's additional cost into mapping that out or coordinating with them, and, you know, we can kinda, we can kinda come to that when we get there. Might be something that they could actually help, uh, raise funds and kinda get that done ahead of time, just as a, as a part of what they're doing.
I guess the option on that parking, it'd be, you could do a sign that says no parking during these hours, right?
This may have already been said, but do the visitors to the park have access to the pond?
So the pond is privately owned by the homeowners association.
Yeah, so I wasn't sure, I didn't, I remember hearing that.
And we might get it in the future, maybe.
I have met with them a couple of times, um, to talk about our plans, and they just aren't at the point right now that they're wanting us to, uh, to take that on.
So would that be their responsibility to put up trespassing or inform, informative signs on there?
Correct, if that's what they chose to do.
I think through a demonstration of, of stewardship and partnership and kinda showing them that we're not bringing all this weird traffic to them, it's not impacting their quality of life. I think through that demonstration is how we get them to a point where we could have a, a, a good conversation about taking ownership of that pond and, and making it something that's usable, it, it's not maintained very well at the moment, the trees have fallen and stay in there. So to make it more of a, uh, something that's, that's beautiful in the background as opposed to just a body of water that's currently hauling stuff, so. Yeah, exactly. Alright, any more questions, uh, for Mr. Aaron? Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, I have to scroll back up, it's four hundred something pages, it takes a minute. Alright, so, this is a action item, so I'll entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
I'll make the motion to approve the Cheyenne Park Concept Plan as presented, and authorize staff and HAF associates to proceed with phase one improvements as outlined.
I'll second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? With that, the motion carries. Item G fourteen, discussion, consideration and action on items related to the November the fourth, twenty twenty-five general election, including the certificate of certification of unopposed candidates, the order of cancellation, and ordinance twenty-five dash zero nine two-three dash zero five, canceling the November the fourth, twenty twenty-five general election. Ms. Nichols.
Mayor and council, um, because we had no opposed candidates for the November the fourth general election, we are bringing you the certification of unopposed candidates and ordinance for the cancellation of the general election and an order of cancellation, all of which are statutory requirements. Um, we're still holding the special election for the Home Rule Charter amendments, meaning that the costs associated with the election are still there, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions from council on this one? Alright, hearing none, uh, entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to accept the certification of unopposed candidates and the order of cancellation and to approve ordinance twenty-five dash oh nine two-three dash oh five, canceling the November fourth, twenty twenty-five general election.
Alright, I have a second. Councilman Lowell, I heard him first. Sorry, Councilman Disco.
I'm quick with my birthday.
I have motion and a second. Any any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say no? Alright, with that, number fourteen passes. We're on the number fifteen, consider future agenda items.
I know we have things on the October agenda. I, it's not coming to me at the moment.
We covered a lot tonight, so.
Imagine if y'all would have suggested more on top of what we got tonight. Um I I I can't think of anything other than what's kinda scheduled for this time of year. Anybody?
Declare our official newspaper. I know we'll come back up. We'll have to do our investment policy again. And there are a couple of annual things that we have to do. Um I know we'll have one other engineering item, uh but it's not coming to me at the moment. Acrocat sidewalks.
Ooh.
So that one will be.
Not on your side.
Right.
That'll be on the October agenda as well.
It doesn't matter if they're on my side or not, it's gonna be a problem because they're my road. Uh awesome. Looking forward to it. Anything else from council to consider for future agenda items? Alright, moving on to item H, administrative reports. We're gonna receive the updates from staff. We have our August reports. Here we go.
Here we go.
It's time for the Leslie Show.
I mean, it's gonna take me just a little bit longer than usual.
Okay, talk amongst yourself. When we came in here, it was light outside. Can you believe it?
It's black. When was David Sayles' time? What, next one?
November.
About the same time City's.
Yo, fall back. You'll get a, you'll get another hour back.
In fact, it's November second.
Oh, it is. Yeah.
Yeah.
Celebrate two things.
Hard to believe. Time moves on.
Just looking through the fifty degrees.
I was gonna say, I had it. Well, it wouldn't even go to it at first.
Why isn't it working?
The time is.
Same question?
Yep. I've looked through them.
Everybody's looked through them?
Yeah.
Any uh any feedback on the KPIs or reports or anything? Alright, well, let's zoom through in this time. Zoom on through.
Uh we did finish slightly up here on sales tax revenue, which I'm.
Oh, look at that. Hang on, zoom back. Yeah, look at that. Man.
Finished the month strong on that.
What, what, what is going on there?
I just.
Oh, it's huge, yeah. That's good.
Um still a little concerned about our, our water revenue for the year.
We've had, I think, upwards of twenty inches above normal. Couldn't believe it. Yeah.
So it lessens the strain on our water system and increases the strain on our sewer system, as we say.
Yeah, if you live on Doosie Avenue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Quickly, since you've all looked at it.
Yeah.
Putting into fire prevention month in October, so be a lot of school visits for our fire department.
That's great. They bring the inflatable, the inflatable house out there?
They will.
Alright.
My estimated counts are put us just shy of under three thousand kids who will educate this year.
Wow.
Wow.
We're gonna have that at the city center, grand opening, the park?
Should be probably not.
It's for the kids.
It'll be a national night out.
National night out, okay, cool.
Yes.
I'm just trying to think of when I'll get a chance to jump in.
I can only imagine Chief Johnson brings it up like, hey, the employee lunch, I could bring the inflatable firehouse in.
I do wish we could have an extrication exercise on a car, but you know, can't have everything.
It all depends on how you drive home.
Yeah, they cut up couches every once in a while, right? Y'all disassemble couches every once in a while with the jaws and. It's been a while, but I remember seeing that. There was an over recliner couch over there that got.
You got two horse tools, one for each pump, right?
We have those capabilities.
It's just a wish.
It's menacing.
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Alright, that's that. And you also had income statement as a part of your agenda packet. Got any questions on that? Hearing none, we'll go into item I, executive session, of which we have none, so we don't have to J reconvene. That takes us to item K, adjourn. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Good job.
Any other discussion, any other business? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed stay here. The sign is, time is seven thirty-five. We are adjourned.
Time for a cupcake.